Welcome to the June 16, 2022, meeting of the City of Des Moines Plan and Zoning Commission. I will first read the rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plaits unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the City Clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present their request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that item be removed from consent and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the June 2, 2022, meeting?
I'll move approval.
Thanks, Todd. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, raise your right hand. Thank you. I will now read the consent public hearing items. Item number one is a request from Forget Properties, LLC, represented by Norm Forget, for the following property at 4226 Fluor Drive, 4228 Fluor Drive, and 4230 Fluor Drive. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. Rezone property from MX2 mixed-use district to MX3 mixed-use to allow development of a restaurant with a drive-through use. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to hear this item? Anyone on the commission? All right, this will remain on consent. Number two, request from QuickTrip Corp., represented by Jason Accord, for the following regarding parcels located at 1200 Keowee. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. Rezone property from MX2 mixed-use and MX3 mixed-use to DXR Downtown District to allow development of townhomes. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to hear this item tonight? All right, we will hear that item. Number three, a request from Hubbell Realty, represented by Steve Mosley, for the following property bounded by Murphy Street, Southwest 9th and Southwest 8th. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. Rezone property from P1 Public Civic and Institutional District to DXR Downtown District to allow development of townhomes. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to hear this item? Anyone on the commission? Number three will remain on consent. Number four, request from 4021 Properties, LLC, represented by Jenny Smith, for the following property located at 4019 and 4021 Ingersoll Avenue. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. Amendment to the Plan DSM future land use classification from medium-density residential to community mixed-use. Rezone property from NX2 neighborhood mix district to RX2 mixed-use district to allow two-story building addition for expansion of office use. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to hear this item? All right. We will hear it on public hearing. Number five, a request from TNC Property Investments, represented by Thomas Wong, for review and approval of a public site plan. Tom's Auto Sales Reconditioning Center for Type II Design Alternatives for property at 1440 Maury Street to allow garage-loading entrances on the primary facade of the proposed workshop warehouse-type building, where it is only allowed on the rear or interior side facade. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to hear this item? Anyone on the commission? Number five will remain on consent. There is one other item being considered for consent tonight. Number eight is a request from Fred Jackson for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property at 3363 Ridgeview Drive for Type II Design Alternatives to allow driveway expansion that exceeds the maximum allowed front yard. The applicant and staff are in agreement. The affected neighbor is also in support. Is there a motion from the commissioners to move this to consent?
I'll move to consent.
Thank you, Dory. We'll move this to consent. And we have to vote on that, right? Yep. Okay, so, all in favor of moving number eight to consent, please raise your right So the items for consent tonight are 1, 5, 3, 5, and 8. 1, 3, 5, and 8. Do I have a motion to move those items to, those consent items? Thanks, Carolyn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And now we will move on to the public hearing. We'll start with item number two, which I already read. Shiroshi will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shiroshi Chakrabarti, planning staff. All right, I'm going to go ahead and get started. The item before you, for your consideration, is a rezoning request for a property at 1200 Kiyosaku Way. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from MX2 and MX3 mixed-use district to DXR Downtown District to allow development of townhomes. This is a map showing the subject property. It's, you can see this property right here. It's a irregular-shaped property at the corner of Kiyosaku, 12th Street and Center Street. The applicant has indicated to redevelop the site with approximately 38 townhomes is the concept that they have proposed. As you can see, the site is mostly MX2. There's a corner here that's MX3, and the proposal is to rezone it to DXR. Most of the areas here in general are mixed uses. It's north of downtown, so there's MX2, DX2, et cetera, in the area. There's some, here's a site photo that shows the property. There is an existing one-story vacant building. There is a paved area in the back that's not developed. It's currently vacant, so that gives you an idea of what's there currently on the site. The applicant submitted a concept sketch, and again, I'd like to point out that this is just a conceptual sketch, but it gives you an idea kind of what the applicant is thinking in terms of a design. There's 38 townhome units proposed over here. The site itself is approximately 1.56 acres, and as you can see, there are, there are six buildings with about four to eight units proposed for each of the buildings. There is an access from the south off of Center Street, and the drive aisle goes all the way across and provides access to all of the units. The units are fronting the streets on all directions, so they're outward-facing with the parking area in the back, and there's approximately two, as you can see in the drawing over here, there's approximately two parking spaces per unit that are proposed. With that, I wanted to move on to the staff rationale, as well as the staff recommendation. The applicant is proposing to rezone to DXR. The zoning ordinance describes this district as intended for mainly residential neighborhoods of the downtown, surrounding the downtown, and across the rivers from downtown. As you can see here, this property is located along a transportation, major transportation corridor, Kiyosaku Way. It's north of downtown. The uses are complementary, and therefore, staff thinks that the proposed use of townhomes in this location is an appropriate use for this area. Therefore, with that in mind, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request from MX2 and MX3 to DXR Downtown District. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting. I believe they didn't get any attendees, but they did have a couple individuals, property owners, that contacted them, and they've provided us a summary of what was discussed. Mainly, they had some questions, and the applicant provided the information to the concerned requests that came in. We received some comment cards in support of the project, as you can see here. And this is the consent map showing the property owners that are in support of the rezoning. So that's the end of my presentation. With that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
I had a quick question. Sorry. It says in here that an ITS study was not required, yet it looks like a light is being added. What threshold was, what threshold was it that was used to identify did not meet the threshold, and how did this site perform relative to that threshold?
I do not specifically know what the threshold number is, but we refer to our Traffic and Transportation Department and ensure that a traffic study is not required, and they look at the numbers, they look at the use and the amount of trips that might be generated as a result of the use, and they determine that they didn't meet the threshold for a traffic study, so it wasn't required.
Because this is like one of the busiest roads going, especially in the morning. I mean, and we're saying that even this one, there is not enough traffic going through here, and putting 36 units in here will not impact that corner enough for an ITS to be done for this site. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. A traffic study, it's not meeting the threshold for a traffic study. That being said, it, like you said, it will have an impact, but the impact is not enough to require a full traffic study.
Yeah. The traffic studies are all, those triggers are all based off a trip generation, so that this number of units is not high enough to generate the need for the traffic study. It doesn't mean that when the actual site plan comes in, that our Traffic and Transportation Division won't look at the layout, think about where driveways are. We, I just want to throw the caveat out there, that, you know, we showed their concept, but there's been no, that has not been reviewed. That isn't necessarily exactly what will get approved. It's just there to give you a sense or a flavor of what their goals are, but their site, their layout, their driveway locations, all those things will be looked at during the site plan.
So, just to clarify, sort of going off of what Jason just said, since this is a zoning issue and not a preliminary plat, the staff isn't issuing any opinions about the number of units or how they're located. Is that correct?
Yes. The applicant shared with us a concept. They are, at the rezoning stage, they are not required, they are not required to share that. They did have a concept, so that definitely helps us with evaluating it. So, yes, it is very much conceptual in nature, and we haven't made any comments, with the understanding that as they come in for site plan and other, work out other details, this concept might very much change.
Yeah, there's been no analysis of 135 against this, you know, architecture, number of units, what type of Type IIs they might need. So, yeah, it's just really about zoning today.
I got a question for staff. The staff report mentioned the potential for a request for a right-of-way vacation south of the site.
Yep.
Can we assume that that's in the works, or potentially affecting the site plan layout and the preliminary plat layout? So is the city looking into vacating that portion to the south and essentially selling it to the developer?
So the Traffic and Transportation have indicated that their long-term goal is to get rid of the Southbound Slip Lane, so that is an option that is available to the applicant if they want to pursue it. I did reach out to the applicant. At this time, they're not interested in pursuing it, but in the future, if they do need that space and they want to pursue a vacation, they can come to the city to do that.
All right, seeing no further questions, thanks, Shiroshi. Is the applicant present? All right, please state your name, address. You have 10 minutes, and sign in when you're done.
Good evening, everyone. Doug Saltzgaver, Engineering Resource Group, 2413 Grand Avenue, Des Moines. Also with me tonight is Mike Durkan, the builder and developer. I'm going to start by saying, when this application was made, this property was owned by QuickTrip Corporation. That is no longer true. BD Construction has purchased the property. They're a local general contractor. They will be the builder and owner of the property. So it is not QuickTrip Corporation that's developing this, but at the time, we needed to make this middle. That's who the owner was, so that's who had to sign the application. Regarding the potential right-of-way acquisition to the south, southeast, that was brought up to us. However, because there's about every utility in that area known to mankind, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water, gas, electric, fiber, if we would acquire that, we could not put any buildings on it. So it wouldn't give us any more usable space, per se. So right now, I don't believe there's a reason to try to pursue buying that, but we would work with Traffic and Transportation Department Engineering if they do want to get rid of that turn lane there. We could coordinate things with them on that. Might answer any other questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Please state your name, address. You have five minutes, and sign in when you're done speaking.
My name is Ted Oswald. I'm the owner of the properties at 1221 Center and 1223 Center, which is just to the west of this location. Overall, I'm not necessarily opposed to the rezoning situation. The biggest concern that I have is the conceptual plan is really unworkable from a standpoint as the buildings are planned on being five feet away from my property line. There's not near enough parking. There's no street parking, so that means anytime somebody's going to have a party or a get-together, everybody's going to be parking in my parking lot. So I have a pretty big concern of the conceptual plan of how this sits, and as such, until I would see a better conceptual plan, I'm not in favor of the rezoning.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition? Name, address, or zip code, and five minutes, and sign in.
Hello, my name is Carol Maher. I live in Ward 3 at zip code 50312. I spoke with the Traffic and Transportation Department about this specific request, because when I visited the site, you could see along Kiyosaku Way, there is absolutely no parkway between the sidewalk and the street, and the cars along there go, I don't know, as fast as they want or can, especially when they're running late to get to work at the hospital. So my concern and my question to Mr. Boganreef was, will the applicant be required to move the sidewalk away from Keowee? And he said, yes, that street trees would be required, and that a parkway would need to be built, and the sidewalk would need to be on the other side of that, so that made me feel good. I also would strongly encourage the client to vacate that slip lane, because that is a very dangerous turn that is supported to allow people to get to the hospital. And what happens, your residents will be at a very dangerous intersection if they want to, every time they want to cross the street there, because what that slip lane does is it allows people not to have to stop. And since I couldn't see any green space in the sketch, it might be a great opportunity, because you don't know what's underneath there, to perhaps provide a little green space to the site rather than develop it into another, it would be that triangle there, into another building. I don't have a problem with the density, and would actually, because it's TOD, think that you could have more, but I hope that the applicant does provide charging stations, because it doesn't appear that those are garages. So you would hopefully think about common charging stations that would be available for your applicant, your tenants, and bike racks for visitors. I don't see any bike racks there, which I would love to have, as you know. And it didn't state that there were, these would be apartments or condos, in other words, owned by the, an individual owner, if it's simple type of situation, or if these were going to be apartments. And if, either way, if either of the units were going to be considered affordable, those were the questions and concerns that I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition? Or neutral? Applicant will be given five minutes for rebuttal if you want to address any of the questions that were proposed.
Hi, my name's Mike Durkan. I'm the owner of the property and the development. My address is 215 East 3rd Street, Suite 200. Hopefully, I can answer all your questions. I'll probably start from the last ones first, so in my brain will work correctly. They are residential apartments for rent. They are not for sale, so they are condominiums or for-rent apartments. They will all have two-car garage on the ground floor, plus the two parking spaces in front of the unit. So each unit will have approximately four parking spaces per unit. We will follow all of staff's recommendations and requirement on Keowee. If we need to put trees along there, we will obviously vet that through and follow their process through the site plan approval. We are considering, inside the parking garage, putting those charging stations in some of those units as a feature, and they all will have storage rooms on the ground floor as well for bike storage inside of their units. We are considering a concept for this project, very similar to the City View project, which is just up the street from Keo. They were for sale. These will be for rent, so that will be the main differential, indicator between the two properties, but very similar concept, three-story rental townhomes. Did I answer all those questions? I bet it. Thanks.
Any other questions from the commission?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, if there are no other questions from the commissioners, I'll close the public hearing. What are your thoughts?
Just to clarify, this is just a rezoning. The design will come later. There's a concept for high-density residential, which makes a ton of sense here and would be very, very helpful, but it sounds like no real analysis has been done of the impact of what would be here, because we're just rezoning to make sure that the option for multifamily is, for this development is there. Is that right?
In general, yes.
Wait, what did I specifically get wrong?
No, I would just, I would just say that, yes, we are looking at zoning, and the layout, the number of units, their design, how they fit, or how their access, has not been analyzed. It's not part of tonight's discussion. So if that's, I mean, I just want, that's what I'm thinking. If that sounds right to you, then we're on the same page.
That works for me, yeah. I would move staff unless there's other concerns.
All right, there's a motion on the floor from Chris to move staff. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Thank you. What is it? I don't, 12?
Yeah. No, it'd be 11, right?
11, 0. Yeah.
Yeah, one exception.
Do I need to say that? All right. Yeah. Well, moving on to number four, which I already read, and Bert will be presenting.
Yeah. Item number four is a request to rezone the property at 4019 and 4021 Ingersoll Avenue. It's currently zoned NX2, which is a multifamily residential district. They're proposing to rezone it to RX2, which is one of our less intense commercial districts. I would point out that this property is the first parcel on the north side of Ingersoll Avenue coming from the east that's not zoned residential, I'm sorry, not zoned commercial. Everything east of here is already zoned RX2. So it looks like we're having the same problem that we had last meeting, where the file is not liking Adobe Acrobat, so I'm going to have to use the other. Yeah, so on the second page here, you can see that the property immediately to the east is already zoned RX2, and then this parcel and the parcel next to it are zoned NX2, which again is the multifamily district. So there's currently two buildings on this parcel. There's this one-story office building, and then there's a single-family house behind it. These properties are within the Greenwood Platts National Historic District, so it's not a local historic district, meaning that the, any improvements do not have to go to the plant or to the Historic Preservation Commission, but we are cognizant of the fact that this is in a national historic district. So here's another photo. You can see that the Ingersoll Street is being reconstructed right now in front of the subject property. So it's currently a one-story office building, and they're proposing to construct this addition onto the east side of the building. If you see where the cursor is, they would put a two-story addition immediately onto the east side of the building. Here are some character elevations that they provided. And again, this is similar to the last one. They're only, the commission's only considering the rezoning tonight. There's a site plan that will be required if the rezoning is approved to allow this site improvement. So again, tonight, we're really only looking at the rezoning, is the RX2 district appropriate for this property, rather than is the sketches I'm showing you right now appropriate? So from a staff's perspective, we did, we do believe that rezoning it to, or RX2 would be appropriate. Again, it's the first property coming from the east that's not already zoned RX2, so it's kind of a natural progression. If it was, you know, zone, located mid-block, a block to the west, so it'd be like a so it'd be like a standalone parcel zoned RX2, we might feel differently. But because it's already contiguous to RX2, we do feel that it meets the, it would be appropriate to rezone. So we have recommended approval of the Land Use Plan Amendment and of the rezoning. Our only zoning condition that we're recommending tonight is that any future construction on the site, be it in accordance with Preservation Brief 14, which is for new exterior additions to historic buildings. And that's just to the satisfaction of the city's planning administrator. Like I said, this is in a local or a national historic district, so we want to be cognizant and respectful of that. So here's the consent map. We did get one card immediately to the north that was in opposition, or is in opposition. This card I'm showing you right now is from the Neighborhood Association in support. And then this card was opposition, but didn't have any comments. And then we also had this card in opposition here that says it's too far west to have a two-story commercial building. And then this is just a summary of the neighborhood outreach that was done for the rezoning. With that, were there any questions for me?
All right, thanks, Bert. Is the applicant present? Please state your name, address. Ten minutes, and sign in when you're done.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anna Squire. I'm with MA Architecture. The applicant, Jenny Smith, the Officer of 4021 Properties LLC, is not present tonight, so I am here on her behalf. I would just add that those drawings are very conceptual. We're in kind of the concept phasing, test-fit phase with her, so please take those with a grain of salt. We are familiar with Preservation Brief 14, and as architects, we'll ensure that the addition complements the existing architecture as well as the neighborhood. So that's something we'll strive to do with the project. I'm curious to hear what questions there are, and open to answering any of them. But I think the description in the packet is pretty self-explanatory for what we're looking to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
My name is Jim Stavenek. I live at 637 41st Street, 50312. And I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this discussion. I am president of the North of Grand Neighborhood Association, which the city of Des Moines recognizes as the official neighborhood association for the area, including 4019 Ingersoll. And the North of Grand Board consists of members who also live in close proximity to this property. In your packet, listed as point number two, under additional applicable information, both 4019 and 4021 Ingersoll are contributing structures to the Greenwood Park Platts National Historic District, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. I'd just like to reemphasize, and it's already been discussed here, that the North of Grand Board supports P&amp;Z's staff recommendation that the Preservation Brief 14, in reference to the new exterior additions to historic buildings, be utilized to guide design development of any addition to 4019 Ingersoll Avenue, prior to and through the site plan process, and will be a requirement for any future construction. The goal, of course, is a new addition that preserves the building's historic character. We assume you will approve the required parking spaces as proposed. If it does require additional off-street parking, then we do have concerns about the ability to keep the house behind the commercial building from being torn down for any additional parking spaces. So parking is a concern. If you all approve it at some, during this process, then the North of Grand Board and I, as a resident living close to this property, are supportive of the rezoning of 4019 Ingersoll. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Jim. Are there any questions? Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone in opposition?
Hi, my name is Carol Maher. I live in Ward Three, zip code 50312, not far from this property. I appreciate that you're only approving the zoning change tonight, but I cannot stress enough, as it has been mentioned, that I want to make sure that, because this is on the National Register of Historic Places, and that the architect has confirmed that she's familiar with Preservation Brief 14, yet the concept was way out of bounds of that brief. So I hope that when the final sketch, final plan is provided, it will be compatible with massing size and scale and be differentiated between the old and the new, as is required in the brief. And I really don't know anything about historical preservation, but I have a neighbor who gave me those words. So I'm not really that smart. But also, I don't know who's required to approve that. Is that you? Okay. So I hope Jason is in a good, thorough mood that day when he sees the design and will remember the historical significance of the existing building and the requirements of the Preservation Brief. Also, I don't see any bike racks there, and I'm not sure what's required as the gentlemen, both from North of Grand, what parking or other requirements are required to be done to bring the parking lot, which is, at this point, just all concrete, into compliance with landscaping and other requirements. But it'd be really great if you could bike there, if you were an employee or a visitor to the building, because there's going to be those nice, separated bike lanes right there in front of it, as they're working on it right now. So don't forget about us bicyclists. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to this item? Or neutral? The applicant will be given five minutes for rebuttal.
Anna Squire with MA Architecture, again. I would just say that once, if the rezoning is approved, that next steps will be going through all of the city review processes, including site plan review, which will look at parking and bicycle parking requirements, as well as reviewing how we meet Preservation Brief 14 with the historic requirements and guidelines. So that is next step of this project. We understand the requirements and restrictions, and we will work to meet those. As far as parking does go, that, or the building, 4021, the residential building beyond, that is not part of this project at this time. All units are occupied, and the owner wishes to maintain that structure. I think I answered all those questions. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Regarding the parking behind the building, is that being used to the maximum for this office space? The parking behind this building is for the office. Is that correct?
That is correct. I would say it depends on the day, because they have embraced virtual working as well. But it can be used to the maximum, yes. We will be doing site plan drawings and design as part of this project. The addition requires that. So we will ensure that parking counts meet the required amounts.
Okay. Do you anticipate that there will be an expansion of parking?
It's not in the plan at this time, but we have not gotten to that discussion yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions for staff, I'm going to close the public hearing. What does everyone think?
All move staff.
Thanks, Dory. There's a motion from Dory to move staff. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Twelve zero. All right, we'll be moving on to item number six. Request from Fur Generation LLC, represented by Apple Carium for the following property at 2713 MLK Parkway and 2711 MLK Parkway. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. Amendment to the Plan DSM. Future land use classification from community mixed-use to industrial use. Rezone property from MX3 mixed-use district to I1 industrial to allow the use of the property as an auto-recycling junk and salvage yard business.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Shiroshi Chakrabarti, planning staff. Just make sure that this is visible here. Thank you. The rezoning request before you is for a property at 2713 and 2711 MLK Junior Parkway. The rezoning request is to rezone to I2 industrial use. The current zone for the property is MX3 mixed-use district. The applicant is requesting the rezoning to be able to use the property for an auto-recycling use, which falls under the junk and salvage yard use category, and that requires the I2 industrial district. Essentially, that's the reason why the applicant is before you to rezone. Here is a aerial of the property in question. It's on MLK, as you can see, on the east side. Generally, a pretty busy corridor. Traffic, however, there's a mix of uses here. There's some high-intensity commercials, some light industrial. There's also residential, as well as other uses. Just in the vicinity of the subject property, there is some parkland and open space adjacent to it, as you can see here. This is a bird's-eye view of the property. It's right here. You can see there's a cellphone tower right here. There's also a billboard that stands on the property. There's an office space, kind of in the front, a car display lot right here, and then some warehouse and repair shop at the back. Just the size here. Some pictures to give you some context. This is the business in question. There's quite a bit of parking with the car sales and display lot and the office here at the back. Here's the billboard. And I'll just move through the pictures to give you an idea of the area. This is looking north on MLK, and then this is looking south on MLK, to give you a character, to give you an idea about the character of the corridor here. So with that, I'm going to move on to staff rationale and staff recommendation. In your staff report packet, you should have seen that there is some rezoning history that's associated with this site. And I'll zoom in a little bit, so you can see better right here. So in 1999, the owner of the property rezoned, requested to rezone from M3 limited industrial to C2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial district, which is what allowed the owner for the use of the property for a vehicle display lot, subject to a few conditions, as you can see here. The property owner, again, came back in 2008 and requested a rezoning. The Plan and Zoning Commission, at that time, recommended rezoning from limited C2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial district and M3 limited industrial to M1 light industrial district. And it was subject to several conditions, as you can see here. The applicant did withdraw this request prior to city council public hearing. And then, following that, came back in 2010, at which point, the property was requested to be rezoned again, which would allow vehicle repair and vehicle sales and display businesses on the property. City Council did approve the rezoning request with several conditions. Again, these are outlined over here. Following that, on December in 2019, the property was rezoned to MX3 mixed-use district as part of the citywide rezoning. So given the history of the zoning history of the property and the uses, as you can see, the Plan DSM designates the subject property as community mixed-use. The proposed rezoning is not consistent with that land use that would require a land use amendment from community mixed-use to industrial. Staff believes that generally, industrial uses, especially intensive industrial uses, should be located in areas of the city that are already designated for these types of uses. And the subject property, as you saw in the map, is located along MLK in an area which is primarily a commercial corridor. And the uses adjacent to the corridor are predominantly commercial, with some warehousing, light industrial, and other office uses, and so on. The property is also adjacent to some environmentally sensitive area with the open parkland and open space. Therefore, staff believes that this rezoning and the proposed use is not appropriate for this location, given the surrounding adjacent uses and the impacts that it could have. If rezoned to I2 industrial uses could have a significant impact on adjoining properties. With that in mind, staff is recommending denial of the rezoning request. And the applicant did, I wanted to report on his neighborhood outreach. The applicant went out and visited with individual property owners within the noticing area and provided quite a bit of detailed feedback. Generally, in a nutshell, the summary of the neighborhood outreach indicated that most neighbors were not concerned with the use, but there was some concern with the rezoning to industrial. We received a couple comment cards in opposition to the rezoning. And you can see here in the consent map, one of the comment cards, it's just right outside the 200-feet boundary. And the other one is a little further out, so it wasn't captured in the consent map. So with that, if you have any questions, that's the end of my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions.
I don't see any questions. Thank you, Shiroshi. Is the applicant present? Please state your name, address. You have ten minutes, and sign in when you're done.
Excuse me. Hello, everyone. My name is Matt Mooncoco, the owner of Economical Auto, 12713 Martin Luther King. So basically, when you say the word recycling, it's basically, everyone kind of started hesitating, thinking that you're going to turn it into like a junkyard, like a salvage yard. But going around in the neighborhood and thinking about it, and I had about almost a three-hour meeting, four-hour meeting with my neighbor Doug. And so basically, the goal for the recycling in the state of Iowa, if you're a dealership, you're supposed to have a recycling license, but there's some restrictions with it. So basically, we have all the license to go to every auction, except one auction, that's Copart. So in the state of Iowa, anybody in this room right now can go to, sign up and go to Copart and sign up. And basically, you can get up to six cars a year, register them, fix them up, and put them back on the lot. So basically, you only have six cars a year. So with the recycling license, with us being a dealership, it would allow us to have unlimited cars to get a year. So you can have up to, basically, almost 40 to 50 cars a year with the recycling license. It just gives you, basically, unlimited cars than the standard six cars a year. So basically, when we get these cars from Copart, we've always been doing is getting the cars right off of Copart and taking them to the cars right off of Copart and taking them to the, basically taking them to a body shop and getting the body work done. So when we bring the cars back to the lot, all we're doing is basically oil change, brake pads change, engine checks, then later on, get the car inspected and put it back out on the lot. So with Copart, the cars that are being at Copart are basically cars that have been donated, hail damage, or accidents, and basically, you just come back, repair them, and put them back on the lot. And I was speaking with Doug, and he actually, one of my neighbor Doug said something that caught my attention, is if I do sell the property later on with that recycling license, the biggest thing that I'm afraid is if someone else might actually use that property and you turn it into a junkyard. So with me going for the license, we're trying to figure out, is there like a specific reason, restrictions that I can use with that license? And that's it. If anybody has any questions, answer.
So thanks for coming and presenting this to us. So it's absolutely not a salvage yard?
No, no. It's basically, it will never be a salvage yard, because just where the area is. So basically, the recycling license would just allow me to buy more cars than six cars a year, because right now, I'm only doing six cars a year. And one of my other cousins in Winters said, asked me if I could use his license to go into Copart and get more cars, but it's like, for me, there's no point if I can apply for my own license. So with that recycling license, it would just allow me to buy more cars than six cars a year and have them out on the lot. But there will be no broken cars showing, no junkyard, no nothing. This license is just like for specific use, just to allow me to get more than six cars a year from Copart.
So right now, and sorry, you're saying that there's a city code that only allows you to have a certain amount of cars on the lot as a dealership, essentially?
No, not as a dealership. You can have up to as many cars as you want, but with Copart, you're only allowed to have six cars a year, basically under your name. But if you're a dealership and you have a recycling license, it allows you to have up to basically as much, as many as you want.
So just to clarify, so he's seeking a recycling license from the state, and at that point, the scope of the work, the magnitude of that is what's driving the need to rezon the property. It's kind of, it's moving beyond auto sales into what we would consider by zoning a salvage use, auto recycling.
Sorry, that's what I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding. So basically, the business itself wants to be licensed as a recycling business, but the business that's actually occurring on the lot itself is essentially a car with some hail damage, swaps off the, you know, we do some light fixing that they're already doing now, aren't we? Or is there no auto repair on this site now?
I don't know if there's, is there auto, do you do auto repair or just sales right now?
We're not, we don't do no auto repairs. Like the hail damage, we get that work done at the body shop on Second Avenue. But once the cars are done, we just bring them back to the lot, do brake changes, oil changes, and put them back out on the lot. But we don't do no body work at the lot at all.
So as far as the scope of the work that would be done on this lot after you get licensed as a recycler, does it change at all?
No, we're not going to, no.
So there's going to be no change of the type of work occurring at this location?
No.
The only difference is you, as a company, get to own directly more cars than you would now, but the number of cars on this site will not change, and type of work on this site will not change. Is that right?
No.
But the salvage license would, and the zoning would allow, we have him describing what he's doing or intending to do, but those two mechanisms would allow a much broader spectrum of work to happen here. So that's what our, why our recommendation is what it is. I just want to make, in a-
Well, yes, so that's what I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding, is right now, we have a business that's legally operating. There will be no change of the business's legal operation, yet we're asking for a significant change in zoning. I'm just wondering, who proposed the change in zoning? Is that you?
That's required for him to get the license from the state. We have to sign, the city has to sign off that he has the appropriate zoning, and he doesn't have the appropriate zoning for that license.
Okay, so he can't legally operate the business with recycling license here without it, even though there is no change of the business? So is that right?
Well, I don't, he's looking to go beyond the six that he's doing now without a license. So I mean, I think-
He's going beyond the desire to own six, even though the number of cars on the lot is not necessarily going to be impacted.
The license allows a much broader spectrum of activity than what he's intending to use it for, but the license still lets you do that. So for us to say that the site has the appropriate zoning to allow that license, it needs the I-2 zoning. It'd be like getting a limo license, but I'm only going to drive a car, but it's still good to let me drive the limo.
Some people like to ride in the back of a Prius, but I'm just saying, but so- Understood, and I guess what I'm trying to say, so that makes a lot more sense. That piece for me was missing, in understanding why this was actually needed. But the second element is, so it sounds like, and I'm sorry, I know Caroline, I don't mean to, no, so I didn't mean to jump on and jump, but we're, so here, it sounds like this isn't an I-1 area, but I guess, boy, so he can't be a recycler at all here if it's not I-1, even though this is the type of business use we would want to enable here if it's not changing the scope he's doing.
Yeah, and I think it's actually I-2 zoning. Am I correct?
I misspoke, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure that I, that's correct.
So just to be clear, any other business that has this recycling license in the city limits of Des Moines is in an I-2, at least an I-2 district, if not an I-1?
Well, I-2 is the more intensive, so yes, they'd be in I-2, and then they also, even if this property is zoned I-2, you'd have to get a conditional use approval from the zoning board adjustment.
Okay, I'm just trying to gauge what other businesses-
Sure.
-do this, and where are they located? Just, yeah, I guess I'm not as familiar with this.
I don't have any specific examples of mine.
So do you need the I-2 zoning approval and a conditional use permit on top of that?
Yes, so anything in I-2 that, I mean, there's, most of the uses in the I-2 district are conditional uses. They have like the performance criteria that the zoning board adjustment reviews your application against, and then you have to operate the business in conformance with that. It's providing an extra layer review and oversight for the more heavy impactful uses in the city. That's why there's that little extra step in the process.
So Jason, is it possible, if we deny this, can they go to board of adjustment and get the conditional use and not impact the zoning for future?
If the rezoning is denied, then the alternative would be to seek actually a use variance. You wouldn't need the conditional use, you would just go to the board for a use variance that would be tied to, you know, the specific model.
And would the use variance be enough, or is that what you're getting at, too, to get the recycling license from the state?
Yeah, and that was actually, that was actually what my goal was, like, even if it gets denied, because it's like, even if I do sell the property down the road, I don't want someone to come with that recycling license and actually use it as a recycler, because that's actually going to hurt the neighborhood. That's, that was actually one of my reasons why, I kind of just wanted to explain where I was coming from, and because as soon as I seen the word recycling, everybody kind of started being afraid that I was going to use it as a junkyard. So I was just, so that was actually what my goal was.
So what we're trying to do here today is actually ensure that, because we're probably pretty sure it's not an I-2, we're saying, we do want to deny this for the opportunity to actually get a use license, which gives you the opportunity to get a recycling license, which allows this business to operate while you actually are able to acquire more assets for your business. Is that the gist of it?
Yeah, and just for a specific use, that's actually what my goal is, just for a specific use, and that's just going to get unlimited cars from Copart.
Okay, so we are happy, so if this is denied, we do know that that was a strategy you were pursuing anyway, so that's the outcome that is the most beneficial to you?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, okay. Couple questions. So we have a resolve on that, so deny the zoning change, and then they will go to, what was that again?
Yeah, order of adjustment.
Which that was in your plan?
Yeah.
Right, okay. And then my next question, how long do you, like, so you're typically bringing them in, getting them up to par, and then just flipping them, selling them, correct?
Basically, yeah, so we get the cars from Copart and straight take them to the body shop.
Who's Copart, sorry?
Copart is in, it's basically, it's a worldwide auction, that cars that's been in previews, hail damage, donated, accidents, and basically, you just go in there, bid on cars. It's a little bit cheaper than a regular auction, so you'll come back, do some body work on the car, then after that, you, once the car is done with the body work, you got to take it down to the police department, get the inspection, they go ahead and write it off for you. Once they write it off, you go ahead and register it, then you go ahead and flip it and put it back out on the lot.
How long have you been doing this business for?
Since my sophomore year of college.
How many years, you think?
Huh?
How many years?
Now, just graduated last year from Woodburg, so probably about five years now I've been doing it.
Go Knights. I want to go work.
Oh, sweet, go Knights.
All right, so I'm a businessman and entrepreneur, so I like to ask those questions and make the connection.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Are there any other questions at this point?
What's the permit called again?
The use variance?
Use variance, all right, so how does that work out? If that is granted, say that he sells the property, does that usage variant die with the sale of that property?
No, it will run with the land, but the thing about the use variance is it can be tied very specifically to the business model, so it'd be written in a way that I think, you know, you could get very specific, as the gentleman has about, you know, the body work is done upsite and those kinds of things that, so only somebody doing, operating a business just like he is would be able to take over.
Okay, gotcha.
Prohibit outdoor store, you know, all the sorts of stuff like that.
And for what he's doing right now, that is the proper zoning, that MX3, for like a car shop, car sale?
Yeah, MX3 is the, kind of our most auto oriented zoning district, very comparable to the C2, the old code, which this property was zoned C2 previously, so.
Okay. And then I think I have one more question for the applicant, sorry. Where will you, where do you plan to put all these vehicles?
So right now, right, once we get them from Copart, usually put them in the garage, because we've been having a lot of issues with Cadillac converters being cut off, and I'm still working on the property. So right now, as soon as, once we get the cars from the body work, from the body work done, we put them right in front, in front of the lot where those, all those cars are, up in the front.
Okay. You said you have indoor storage, too, there?
Yeah, we do. There's a garage underneath and upstairs also.
Is it that 2711 property?
Yeah, back there.
Perfect, I think that's all my questions. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thanks, Justin. All right, well, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition? You can go after him. Please state your name, you have five minutes, and sign in when you're done.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you. My name's Doug Olbest, I'm a board member at Agape Research, Lemons Resource Center. I have with me Leanna Simpson, who's the executive director there as well, and we did meet with the applicant, and we have no concerns with what he plans to do. We fully support his enthusiasm and building the business. We have no problem with that. So I hope the use of variance would be the route to go. That being said, we oppose the zoning change, because as he said, and as we talked about, if the title changes to that property in the future, then anything could go into that industrial zone that would be objectionable to us. We're actually across the street and about a half block south of that property. So that's pretty much our position on it. I won't spend a lot more time expanding on that, but we are fully supportive of him and commend him for their, expanding their business model, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
You have five minutes. Please state your name and address, and then sign when you're done.
Thank you. My name is Pastor Tammy Harris with Elpis Christian Fellowship, 4260 Northwest Sixth Drive is where we're worshiping now, 50313. We are the owners of the land directly across the street, the 4.2 acres, that odd partial, and then the long partial running to Prospect Road. We are opposing the zoning change. I am also excited about his excitement, and now that we do understand it is not going to be a wreckage unit place, but I am in denial of that, but we would, if he can get the variance license that he needs, we're all for that. But it was just the fact that I have members in that residence who are concerned about the property value, and then the fact that we have a 44,000 square feet building going up on that property, so it was a concern for us as well. But if he can get the variance, then we're good. Thank you.
State your name, address, five minutes, and sign in.
I am Zakiya Jenkins with Grace Fitness, 2643 Beaver Avenue, number 171. And what else? This is my first time.
You just sign in when you're done. A name, and then you have five minutes.
This is a low income area that's in the food desert. We don't need a salvage yard, but he just explained that, that it won't be a salvage yard. It's already a blighted area, and it would not be in conformance with the plan Des Moines is creating, creating our tomorrow comprehensive to improve the area. This area needs to have more food and health options, as this community is also one of the unhealthiest zip codes in the city, and a salvage yard will not build up the property slash neighborhood, and I do oppose the rezon. But after listening to him, you know, if they could do a variance, then that would be understood, because I'm looking at purchasing the property right next to his, that's for sale. That's a mixed use of property. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition or neutral? And does the applicant want to have five minutes for rebuttal and any closing statements? Okay, you're good. All right, I am gonna, unless there's any questions for staff at this point, I'll close the public hearing, or do you have, you can have, yeah, I'll close the public hearing, and then you can make a comment. Yeah. You're good now.
Yeah, so that was my initial concern. It sounds like we're, I feel like all of us are in agreement. I was worried it was going to become a salvage yard, too, so I drive that app all the time, every day, at least five times a day, depending on how many times I got to go get my kids or drop off a stuffed animal at the daycare. So, yeah, I'm familiar with the area, but I hope that we can get the variance through. It sounds like the community wants that, and we'll deny the zoning if we can move to that, so.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Thanks, Justin. There's a motion from Justin to move, I guess move staff? Would that be right? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, 12-0. Thank you. The next item, and thank you to the applicant.
Does he know what the next steps is to-
Yeah, I was going to make sure.
Yeah, the item, this is a recommending body, so their recommendation will move on to the city council, and feel free to follow up with the staff person that you've been working with, and we can help you get know what those dates are. Thank you.
Number seven is a request from Stony Point Car Wash LLC, represented by Lloyd Lynn, for review and approval of the second amendment to the Stony Point PUD conceptual plan on property located at 5901 Southeast 14th to allow restaurant with a drive-through use. And Bert, who will be presenting?
Chair members of the commission, Bert Droste, planning staff for the city of Des Moines. As the chair just stated, the request is to amend the Stony Point PUD, which is located on the east side of Southeast 14th Street, just to the south of East Deal Avenue. So this area highlighted in yellow is the portion of the PUD that they're proposing to amend, but the PUD actually includes the strip center to the east, as well as the Culvers and Taco Bell restaurants to the south. Just for a couple points of reference, the- the Tasty Tacos restaurant is immediately to the north, across East Deal. There's a Come and Go Caddy Corner to the northwest, and then there's a, another mixed-use commercial center directly across Southeast 14th Street to the west. So I'm gonna show you some pictures, there's quite a few here, so I'll go through it quickly. There's an existing uh, car wash that would be removed to make way for this new restaurant, which would be a Starbucks restaurant with a drive-through use. Uh, this, oh, sorry, I was hoping it was gonna work this time, so I'll flip back to this. Yeah, so the uh, car wash would be removed, replaced with the um, Starbucks. So here's some, let's just show you a couple of photos, here's some street view, so this is the view down East Deal. The driveway here would stay in generally the same spot, and this is looking at it from the intersection. Uh, the existing car wash is set back, I believe, 90 feet from the front property line. The proposed PUD that I'll show you here shortly has the building set at, I believe, 65 feet. This is that, coming from another angle. So this is the approved PUD conceptual plan that we have on file. And as I stated, the amendment would really only impact the extreme northwest corner of the PUD. Uh, you can see that it was originally proposed to have a fuel station, but it was ultimately developed as a car wash. And so here's the amendment that they're proposing. Uh, you can see the restaurant here with the drive-through window on the east rear facade, which is great. Um, they are proposing to maintain the existing drive approaches from East Deal and from Southeast 14th Street. Just hang out here now, the, really the only major point of contention that staff has with this is that we would like to see the building slid closer to Southeast 14th Street. As I mentioned, um, the, I guess, the car wash right here, uh, you can see the footprint of it through the photo, uh, the car wash is closer to the street than what this proposed restaurant would be. So we do feel that to maintain the character on this southeast 14th corridor, that this building really should be slid up closer to the front property line. You know, here, the Culvers to the south is set back, um, slightly further actually, than what the Starbucks would be. Um, but if, if I went back to the aerial, which I'm not gonna go there because it's too clunky, um, the buildings to the north and then to the south of this Culvers are in fact built closer to Southeast 14th Street than what's being proposed here tonight. Uh, here are the elevations, um, the elevations meet our requirements as far as building materials and transparency, it'd be primarily um, brick with some wood and Ephes accenting. And then this is the facade that would face Southeast 14th Street. As far as our staff recommendation goes, we have recommended approval of the amendment, just subject to some conditions. Um, the first being a, a reduction of that setback from Southeast 14th Street to the satisfaction of the planning administrator, and uh, I just wanted to make sure that you understand, our recommendation really is that the building be moved closer, like significantly closer to the front property line, and so maybe you saw two rows of parking between the building and the uh, front property line. We're thinking it would be really more appropriate to just have one row of parking between the building and the front property line, and then slide the other row of parking back um, behind the building. Just go through the rest of these recommended conditions. The second is just that any proposed signage comply with the requirements for the MX3 district, and in addition of notes to the PUD conceptual plan, just stating that the site will comply with a tree mitigation, or tree removal mitigation ordinance, and comply with any grading and soil erosion requirements. So here's the consent map, we did get a card from the Tasty Tacos across the street to the north in opposition. Uh, didn't provide any comments, but they might be here tonight. Here's just the summary of the neighborhood outreach that was done. And really that concludes my pro, my presentation, but I'll go back to that drawing that shows the layout. And I think staff's preference is that one of these two rows of parking here be moved to behind the building, so this northwest, or north-south drive approach back here has, is double-loaded rather than this drive approach.
If I could just add on to what, what our thinking was a little bit there, you know, if you, um, Bert has pointed out some of the other buildings in the area, including the car wash, that are a little closer, frame the street a little bit more. Um, you know, if this was zoned MX3, like a lot of other uh, corridor is, uh, a, um, you know, an outbuilding like this and a, and a commercial center would actually need to be even closer than what we're suggesting for this development without, unless it had a type 2 design alternative. Uh, our thought, you know, and I think the thing about, you know, uh, if you remove one of those rows of parking, that's just one less thing that a pedestrian's looking at as they walk through, so it's not just about framing, I mean, it, it helps frame the street a little bit, but also um, makes it just a little more pedestrian-oriented, so. But we didn't write anything specific as a condition, we wanted to leave it open for discussion, see what the commission thought, and what the applicant had to, had to say, and that's why we went with just kinda something that we would, we would work on it after we hear input.
Any questions?
I have a question for staff. So are, do we have a, what's recommended as far as the distance? Because it sounded like we wanted it to align with the building to the north and the building to the south, the Taco Bell. Do we know what that distance is?
Um, I have it written down.
And if not, I can, I can measure on the aerial here, if you give me a minute.
Yeah, according to this, the Taco Bell had a 50-foot setback. Um, the Culvers to the south has 120-foot setback, the Tasty Tacos to the north has an 80-foot setback, and then the Melbourne Apartments north of that has a 45-foot setback. And I, I think I misspoke earlier, I said the car wash had a 90-foot setback, actually it's a 64-foot setback.
And what they're currently proposing is a?
Uh, I believe they're proposing 90.
90-foot setback, okay, thanks.
Okay, Bob says 102.
Just to clarify, you're generally saying you want the northwest corner of the building to align with the northwest corner of the current building, is that roughly accurate?
A good way of stating it, yes.
Alright, thanks Bert. Is the applicant present? State your name, address, 10 minutes, and then sign in when you're done.
Good evening, I'm Bob Gibson with Still Design Advantage, 4121 Northwest Urbandale Drive in Urbandale. We're in agreement with the staff's recommendation, obviously, because it's to approve, but we do want to discuss their first recommendation about moving the building. Um, and our comments here don't really have anything to do with financial considerations, it's just purely functional and what we view as safety issues. Our concept is shown like that, um, the vast majority, if not all, the walk-in customers that will use that parking lot will park, obviously, in the west lot. The east is mostly anticipated for employees or services. The drive-through traffic will be split, you'll have some come in from the north, some come in from the south, and so you only have half of the drive-through traffic, give or take, that'll come in off of Deal, swing around the west side, and then get into the drive-through lane. Um, the reason I bring that up is that the front door, the front elevation faces East 14th, and the customer parking should be in close proximity to that front door for safety purposes. If we relocate a whole row of parking to the rear, then the customers will have to cross, all the customers that park there will have to cross 100% of all the, the drive-through traffic, and they'll have to cross it at the driveline as they're, as they're coming out. And there's just some serious safety concerns with that, um, just the traffic, and then I was thinking the potential of people leaving a drive-through window, putting their change away, or putting their card in their wallet, or taking a sip of the coffee, just there's, I would say there's slight chance of distraction there, and you've got, you've just all of a sudden put more the people that have to get to the store, park there, walk through the driveline around the north side to get to the entry, which is really in the south half of the east elevation. So that's something we would like, like to be considered, and um, I'm not sure if this would be decided at this meeting, but I just, I did wanna get these concerns out. And regarding pedestrians coming from East 14th and crossing the parking lot as shown there, I would say, I would guess, I guess is the appropriate word, that there's not gonna be a whole lot of pedestrian, uh, there will be some, but not a whole lot of pedestrian customers coming that way and using that, that walk and the crossing, and by putting half of the parking that's on the west side on the east side, uh, you're putting more people at risk of crossing the drive-through lanes and the vehicle movements, so. Um, and then just from some urban design and aesthetic considerations, I understand the, the desire to get the buildings closer, and um, I'm generally all for that. This, however, because there is such a variety of stuff, um, I'm not, not sure how significant it would be here, particularly where staff has recommended that we move it 25 feet to the west. That is not, in my opinion, is not gonna do much to get closer to that ultimately 10-foot setback that, that you like to see with new stuff. The site, the building does sit five and a half feet below, um, East 14th, and, let's see. So you're not even looking, you know, directly, you're looking across more, you know, up at the, up above the doors, basically, going in. Um, regarding that setback, our setback is shown at 102 feet. The Tasty Taco was mentioned, and it's setback, and its setback, even though it's closer to the right-of-way, because of the way that things flare out there, the, the face of the building is in exact alignment with our proposed one, to aligns up. And regarding all the adjacent buildings, Culvers 135 foot, Taco Bell 50, Tasty Tacos 88 feet, the Melbourne Condo South is, I think this is backwards, north is, south is 88 feet, but north is 146, and if you, I don't know what this statistic is worth, but if you average out all those setbacks, it's 101 feet, and we're proposing 102. So as I said, I think a, a 25-foot move to a 77-foot setback would have minimal, if any, visual effect on the streetscape. What would have, however, would be the fence as shown and proposed, and I don't know how well it shows up there, but um, we're proposing, well, we'll propose on the site plan, again, this is conceptual, but this is fairly close to what we're, what we're working on. We're proposing all along East 14th, a three-foot-high brick and ornamental fence. It'd probably be the, the black ornamental fence that you guys use, and then there'd be masonry columns, and even masonry sections, you know, maybe an eight-foot section or something like that, it's, that's all up in here. And um, setback maybe eight feet from the sidewalk. And that would give it kind of an, an appearance of having a building structure closer to the front street, and the fence will also have a pedestrian gate to enter in it. By the way, that walk as shown there doesn't work because of the grades, we, it would if you had steps like Taco Bell, but, but Starbucks would prefer to have it, an accessible walk coming, coming down. So it's gonna have to do, run up down our property and then get out to East 14th closer to that south drive. But anticipating it, kind of an entrance gate to give it some character, in addition to that too, we would um, we would propose additional landscape to give it a lot of character that would really contribute to the streetscape look as well as to the pedestrian experience out there. Moving the parking, you, to the east, even if we shove the building 25 feet to the west, is gonna push us a few feet farther onto that slope at the, on the east, that drops off into the parking lot below, and that would likely cost us, uh, those two fir trees and probably that linden as well, which are, which are good-sized trees. There's just some other considerations, is that, um, we've got nine stalls in that, that row along the front, which is, is less than what actually the, the space would have allowed, so we could have asked for more then. We oriented the building like we did to meet the city's requirement to having a drive-through lane on the backside, and um, that, that works really well. And just the site does have some physical challenges. If we were to twist it this way, it wouldn't work as well, and I think even, well, coming from Deal, Deal drops off at 7% to the east, and that driveway coming off Deal comes down pretty steeply, and it's been a challenge looking at that grading to how it's ultimately gonna work, and um, get all our drainage and everything appropriate, but um, I guess that's, that's it for now, so I'll, I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
So I think your, your main concern is based off of safety and walkability to connect from parking lot to?
Yeah, yeah, safety and, and convenience and functionality. Yeah, 'cause you'd have a bunch of customers that have to cross through that traffic and then around, and then it's front.
Um, I don't know if this is a question for you or the staff, whoever can answer it. What is the required number of parking spaces for this property?
Off the top of my head from looking at this about, um, when the report was being looked at, I think it's about 15 spaces, 16, so it's this, do you know what the square footage, it's 100, divide the square footage by 150. It's on the drawing, we just can't see it.
2200.
It's 15 spaces.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, thank you. Are there any members of the audience who wish to speak in favor of this item? Any in opposition or neutral? Alright, seeing none. Do the commissioners have any questions for staff?
Yes, uh, are we, is this part of the development plan, or will that also come in front of this body?
Uh, this is the PUD conceptual plan amendment, so this is kinda like the zoning, but with the PUD, it's very site-specific. It'll go on to council, they'll approve it, and then in, um, in this case, there's no uh, specific trigger that would bring it back here. We would review it administratively and make sure it matches this, so if there are things, you know, if you had to note that's, you know, like, one of our conditions, you know, obviously we would sort that out with them after the fact, but for the most part, we'd be looking at this and making sure it matches that.
So if, if staff has moved absent the location restriction, where could this building be within the PUD? Could it, would this, would this comply, the PUD as it is?
Well, if you move the staff recommendation and the council adopts it, I would sort, take that as you're giving us directive that you would like the building closer to the street. And so we would work with the applicant to figure out exactly where, how to situate that. As staff, we're suggesting you take the westernmost row of parking and you put it on the backside, and then just slide everything, but um, if you have other direction, I'd like to kinda hear that to help us.
Yeah, I was meaning if staff has moved less option 1, so if it's like, yep, move staff 2 and 3, but not 1, where could the building go?
It would just, it would be right, right where it's shown.
So there's nothing that would restrict it from being right where it is?
No.
But there's also no leverage to require it to be moved, right? Is that the logic?
That's correct, so if you, if the commission's comfortable with recommending it be as proposed, then you just strike that condition in your motion.
Is it, um, is it common that there are twice as many parking spots?
Is it, is it common that there are twice as many parking spots proposed as required? You could just get rid of the whole western chunk of parking spots altogether and shift the plan west.
We frequently see development proposals that have more parking than our requirements. This is, we have certain zoning districts in Des Moines that have maximums, but even the ones in this area, that would be the MX3, that might be comparable, don't have a maximum.
Sorry, one more. So even if one is not struck, that isn't saying that it has to be moved. So if there are grading issues, because I apologize, I'm familiar with the road, but not familiar enough to have an engineering judgment on it, if we're saying that the grading makes the shifting of it to the west impossible, or requires, you know, or the rotation of the building, for example, is not possible as a result of safety, it could still end up in this location if there's engineering reasons why it would not be there?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, they could present a case that, you know, if you forwarded the staff recommendation, the council adopts it, we work with the applicant, and they convince us there's no better way to do it than it could be here.
So as we have seen in recent examples, even if we were to approve the recommended conditions, council can strike that once they review it, correct?
Yeah, they don't, you just make a recommendation, they decide what they want to apply.
Right. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Or did you have a question? Close the public hearing, and what are the thoughts moving forward?
I would like to see a lot of nice landscaping in the front and not lose the trees. And I do have some concern for that much traffic in the back and employees walking to and from their vehicles.
I'm not sure, I don't like to go down the rabbit hole of redesigning a site. It's not what I do anyway, and I don't think it's the commission's role to do that, but with keeping with the current drives, I'm not sure that there is a better alternatively, alternative for traffic flow. I think innately, anytime you have a drive-through, you're going to present safety issues for the parking spots and for pedestrians. It's just the nature of what that entails. I agree with Dory and also with other commissioners who've commented on the parking that's closest to southeast 14th. I don't know that it's necessary, or if all of it's necessary, I hate to lose additional green space, but I know that's not really on the table right now, but just a comment.
I will move staff.
Thanks, Todd. There's a motion on the floor to move staff from Todd. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And that's 12-0. All right, thank you, everyone. And our final item this evening will be a request from Urban Ruiz Esperanza for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property at 1539 DeWolfe Ave for type two design alternatives for two driveway accesses where one driveway access per lot is allowed, and Nick Tarpey will be presenting.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpey, planning staff. All right, so here's an aerial of the site here. Site's located at 1539 DeWolfe Street. So this is Washington Avenue, this is the street to the north here. 235 is over to the east, probably about a third of a mile, so if you're trying to visualize the area, it's relatively industrial area to the north. To the south is a mix of mostly single-family homes for the most part. Here's just some site photos from the actual site taken last week. So this is the home that's in question. This is the area for the garage, and this is the area that's proposed to add the second driveway. This is the existing driveway that's positioned to the south of the existing home, and then this is just a view down the street looking to the south to give you a context of the neighborhood, surrounding houses. Here's a site plan of what was submitted and what's proposed. So this here is the existing house. This is the proposed garage and the new driveway and the new formalized approach here. This back here is an existing alley, and we'll get to that a little bit later, that'll come up in the discussion. But really, you can see compared, and I'll go back to the earlier aerial that I showed, this is really a wider lot than maybe a lot of the other lots that exist in the neighborhood, so it's kind of a different condition. So you can see, you know, there's some open space to the north of the house. Here's a different view of the proposed garage, so it'll be, the doors will be oriented towards the street, so it'll be a three-car garage or three-vehicle bays, basically. And here's some elevations that show that really materiality and design would pretty much match the existing house. Getting into the staff report here, staff is recommending denial of what is proposed. So for all single-family homes within the city, development is required to have one driveway, that's the maximum. So two would be in excess of that, and staff did a survey of the other houses, really the surrounding neighborhood character, and there was no other houses on the block that had two driveways, and really, the predominant character of the neighborhood, that did not exist. So it wouldn't really be in conformance with the existing development pattern that you would see in the neighborhood. Additionally, as you can read in the staff report, staff, other staff, not myself, had tried to work with the applicant to try to find more of a, somewhat of a middle ground solution to still install the garage, but not necessarily have two drive approaches at the property, and I'll run through those, the couple of options that we presented. So this is the first one, to keep the existing driveway, you're looking at a planned view, and like I said before, the alley comes into play, so the alley that comes in off Washington, they could potentially install a driveway off the alley, and then the garage would be oriented maybe towards the rear of the site, and they would restore the existing approach and just turn it into grass. So keep one, but also be able to add the garage and a little bit of better circulation pattern coming in from the alley. The other option would be to remove the existing drive and then restore that, so restore that to grass or a permeable area, and then legally install a new approach here, add the driveway, and then build the garage. So kind of similar to what you would see with the proposed site plan, but really, we're just removing that existing driveway. So those are the two options that staff ran through. We did not get any comments on this. No neighbors called in or sent any comment cards or anything. So that's the gist of the presentation. Happy to take any questions.
So I just want to confirm that the applicant did not agree with any of your recommended solutions?
That's correct, yes.
We've also had a few of these before, and the solution was that we have to actually take out one of the driveways, so alternative to that would be counter to what we've been approving in the last three months, right?
Yes.
Okay. Say that again? So to approve the original would be opposite of what we've been doing the last three months?
Yeah, we had a case that was north of East University, kind of north of the fairgrounds a few months back, where we had a new garage going in, existing driveway, wanted to do a larger driveway kind of off to the side of the house, and that's where the commission landed on that they really could, had the ability to do one or the other.
But in this case, they could do one, a second one, and from the alley, right? So.
Yep. And just looking kind of at historical aerial images, there was already kind of a, not necessarily a paved drive approach, but if you look back through the history of the images that we have through our GIS, you could see that that was used one time as an access, not with necessarily a garage, but the vehicles did traverse that.
Any other questions?
So he could keep the approach, what is that, south? Was that north, south?
North would be, uh, north.
The existing approach, he could keep that one that's paved, but add an additional to the back, and the city would be okay with that?
Yeah, that would comply, the limitation to the one, it's just one drive approach from the street.
From the street, okay, gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nick. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Yeah, please state your name, address, and then sign in when you're finished. You have 10 minutes.
My name is Urban Ruiz. My address is 1535 DeWolfe Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50316. I bought a property, I bought a property lot next to my house in 2017. When I bought it, I went to the city to ask for permit to build a garage. So they told me I couldn't build a garage until I combined the properties. So in 2019, I applied to combine the properties together. Now, after the COVID took so long, so in 2021, they finally combined the properties. Now everything is on one property. So this is my property, 1535, this is the lot that I bought from the city. They asked me if I can remove my existing driveway. My biggest concern, I don't want to remove it because I don't have a foundation problems. So my, one of the walls, it is like cave, so if I remove it, I'm going to have a lot of water into my basement. And I thought it was pretty common, because having driven around my neighborhood, there is several houses with two approaches and two driveways. So I thought it was normal.
Bert will help you get those.
How, am I just, that, I don't know. Huh? Like that, or? Okay. That house actually has two approaches, and it is the same house, and one driveway goes around the house, and they have the garage on the back. And then also, so they have two approaches and two driveways around the house. That's one of the houses that I've seen around my neighborhood. There is another one, I took all of these pictures from the Google map, but you can see there is two driveways and two approaches on the same lot. There is another one that is, it is on my street. It has two driveways, I mean, two approaches, one driveway, and then two garage. So I thought it was pretty common. There is another one, and I have one approach and another driveway right here. I have, this is one of the biggest ones that I took my attention, they pretty much have the driveway taking care of front of the house, and then also they have another driveway and a garage. There is another one that has two driveways. I mean, I just was looking around to ask myself, why did I kill it? I'm not pretending, I'm not pretending to kill, it wasn't my intention to have two driveways. When I bought the house, it was already one approach right there, so it was one driveway. When I bought the lot next to it, it has another approach, so I haven't used them both. It wasn't my intention, I didn't want it to have intentionally two driveways. So my biggest concern, it is, if I remove the driveway, they want me to put some grass, but I don't know, the foundation is going to support all of that or the drain, and then I don't want to do, well, it's not because I don't want to, because if I do the driveway on the back, and then I have to clean, I'm going to be the only one using the, how you say, the alley, because nobody else is using the alley. That alley, nobody else is using it. So when it snow, I have to clean all, everything just for myself, and also, I have a fence for my kids all around, so I need to remove all of this grass where I just pay some money to have all of this removed. And I'm not pretending to, I'm not pretending to make the approach wider. How, you can see on the, I don't know, how can I go back? Can I go back in here? To look, okay. I made the prints, I made the prints myself. So I'm not intending to make this wider. I mean, I don't, I just can leave the approach how it is and just let me build the garage. Or there is something else that I can do to keep at least the concrete in here, I will, just to keep it, my house dry and not have all the water going into the basement, because one of the, that wall, especially that wall, I do have a picture, I guess, it is like this. So I'm open to some options, questions?
So if, because I guess I see, for example, another one, 1523 East 18th is actually exactly like what you're proposing, but what you're saying is, if the compromise just take away the approach and leave the concrete, because based on the size of this, it doesn't look like it's going to trigger the hardscape ratio, that would still be acceptable to the city, wouldn't it? So you take away the, take away the approach, you put in a new driveway, put the garage down, you're still within right ratios to leave that concrete if that's the real issue?
Are you asking about the 25% of the front yard can be pavement?
Yeah.
Requirement? I don't know if we, but the code also allows you to provide the access necessary for a three-car garage, so even if he's beyond 25%, he would be allowed, if he has a three-car garage, to have this driveway?
But I guess my question is, is he allowed to leave the concrete down the east if there's an engineering reason, if you take away the approach, you now just have basically a concrete side yard?
Yeah, to the south of the house?
Yes.
Yeah, on this side, on the existing one.
Yeah, so.
So, sorry.
Oh, along the, yeah, you could, are you asking, could you remove the apron and the pavement in the front yard?
Correct.
Yes.
If I remove the south apron, leave the concrete, and put the garage, then problem solved, as long as you're happy removing the apron, is that correct?
That would not be, yeah, I mean, he would not be having two driveways at that point. That's just like a patio or something that's in the side yard.
For the basketball hoop or whatever, just.
Yeah.
So if you, if you just had to remove the apron, you're cool, as long as you're allowed to leave the concrete?
Yeah, I mean, if I do that, if I remove right here, right, I'm going to remove this one, how it shows right here, I can leave this concrete right here, remove this approach, oh, sorry, English, it is my second language. But and then, if I do that, and then you guys going to let me build this wider, right, how they offer me right here, where was it, to have, like this? So I can remove, how you say, and then, and then they're going to let me build this wider for the three-car garage, right?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, you don't, you wouldn't even need, I'll come.
I'm new on this, sorry.
Because what you're saying is remove the south, like the first three accesses, and then leave the rest?
Yeah.
Right, so just remove the apron.
But you would, if you did this and you pulled out the apron, but you also would need to remove it out of the front yard, this part here, you wouldn't need the commission, any action from the commission, you could leave from, you know, the front of the house, back is just like patio, pavement. Is that what you're saying, or are you just?
No, they just was, they were saying, what I understood, just remove the approach and leave everything else as it is. That would not have to spend more money.
Yeah, I, the, well, they could, I suppose they could grant you some relief, because I think that this is, more than 25% of your front yard would be pavement, I'm guessing, I could be wrong, but the commission could, as part of their action, could address that if you guys wanted to. Sorry to make it muddy.
No, that's fine, I mean, just, how I say, it wasn't my intention to have two driveways, I just bought a lot, and then I just, I wanted to build a garage before winter, if that could be possible.
So just so that we're all clear, the issue is removing the concrete that's next to the house, right? So you would be okay with removing the approach?
Just the approach.
And maybe up to the house, the concrete, as long as it doesn't touch the house? You would be okay with that?
Except to you.
Okay.
I mean, really, commission, I think if you are, if the pavement's not going to be pulled back, if, I don't know if you can go to, I'm looking at Google Street View, if the pavement's all the way up to the sidewalk, and all you're, and all you're doing is pulling the apron out, I kind of question, why not just? just grant the relief at that point?
Sliver as it is. I mean.
You can't really see it terribly well in this picture, because it's actually the other side of the house.
And then that, how it says, there is a lot of houses around.
There you go.
Two approaches.
Thanks.
And by the way, I already have the approval from the building inspector.
So.
Can we talk about it?
Well, we have to, we have to go through the, yeah, we have to get through the rest.
So the question is, to grant the relief to allow him to build it?
Yeah, well, I think we'll get there, we just have to, I have to ask the public if they have any comment first.
Sounds good.
Okay, you'll have a rebuttal here after we talk to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone in opposition? Or neutral? Okay, and since no one talked, I guess there's really no rebuttal, but does anyone have any questions for staff at this point?
A question I have, it's.
Uh-oh. Yeah, sorry about that.
Do you have any explanation for the other houses with the two driveways in the neighborhood?
Yeah, so it's kind of a, the definition of neighborhood or multi-block vicinity is kind of muddy, so at least along this block, there are no other houses that have two driveways. Some of the other ones that might appear to have two driveways, it, it might be kind of one approach that maybe straddles a lot line, and then also, for some of the other homes that he showed, that's been a condition for maybe 30, 40 years, if you go back on the aerials. There's nothing, you know, recently, within the current zoning ordinance, or within the last decade, really, that has been approved like that to have multiple driveways at one parcel. So that would be the explanation for that.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Nick, and I'm going to close the public hearing, so now commissioners can speak freely.
So if this were to remain two 60-foot wide parcels, there would be two driveways. A new one could only be 25% of the front yard on this adjacent parcel, correct? So if he sold off this adjacent piece of land, instead of having acquired it, which he could do, have it replanted, there, in all reality, could be a second driveway right there, which there is today. I, I went back through the historical, all the way back to the 50s. I don't think there's ever been a house there, but the driveway's always been there. So I, it's just following that logic. I, you know, I would, I would grant the guy what he wants to do, you know, keep the approach, the dri, if the opening to the street stays how it is. And there was one option in there that showed it that way. I'm, I'm fine with that, but that's just me.
Any responses to that?
I would support your thought process there, but I would consider expanding the approach for the new garage to be wider, to better accommodate. That's just my.
Is there a motion from anyone?
I guess I, if I could, I would say that maybe a difference between this and the other case is that there has been some concern expressed for the, the use of that other driveway as, as assistance in grade and stormwater management and keeping moisture away from the house. So I do think that this is a little bit different than the other case that we saw, so I just wanted to have that on the record.
Very good point, Jason. Thank you for doing that.
So to remain consistent, are we saying that we would want to actually remove the apron? If we remove the apron, does everyone feel comfortable, or is there, or we're basically saying is there really is no, sorry. The driveway to the south has been identified as something that if we remove, if we touch the driveway to the south, there's a risk that the foundation is going to be problematic, which is expensive, we don't want to do. The question is whether or not we want to be consistent with only one approach, even though, again, a block over, you have, like, what it looks like his design plan is right there one block over, right? So it seems like there is a rationale for consistency in what's in the neighborhood, but cutting away the south entrance gives consistency with what we've been doing recently, and still allows for safety of the building while still ending up with one approach. But we would then be potentially compromising a 25% ratio in the front. Is removing the second one important enough to actually just require that, or are we saying, eh, since we're not taking out any more concrete, you may as well just leave the whole thing?
I think Todd and Carolyn feel like it's probably not worth taking it out. Yeah. Anyone care to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to grant him relief, allow him to retain the current driveway, and then also build a second driveway on the new lot.
Is that specific enough?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Carolyn has a motion on the floor. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, please raise your right hand. Abstentions, please raise your right hand. 10-1-1. Any directors or staff reports, Jason?
Nothing that comes to mind. Thank you.
All right, we're adjourned.